You're the only case on the agenda. There's staff reports and agendas. So we'll go through our normal pre-reading stuff. We always do a call for cases. If you come here to represent a case, it feels a little awkward around you. You're only here for the audience. Raise your hand. And then we'll finish up all the pre-staff. And then we'll turn it over to Courtney to give a basic introduction of what you've requested. And then turn it over to her.
And we won't be embarrassed if we think you were about. All of our work.
Nope.
Digested process.
Courtney's done all the legwork. Yeah, I'm just here to take the credit. So yeah, feel free to use your accolades.
I understand how that works.
May second is just introduction?
We don't recommend. I mean, you can come if you want.
I'll be there in case I have a question. See, the last thing we brought to the council, they forgot their... They won't do this.
Yeah, they can't do it there. Can't not do it. Because they required public hearing following the May sixteen. So that is the one that you should be at. And usually what we recommend, you have one of two choices. Either it's a straightforward face to the audience question. Or you can step to the podium to give your name and get a very brief... Your forehand, make yourself available for questions. And then that's something else, or especially within the opposition. I see them here, so... But if there is, then let the council know that one is there. After that, I think we're going to get started. And feel free to leave after the case is over. If you have any other questions or anything, feel free to contact Courtney.
Thank you very much, Courtney, for that, boys.
Okay, we'll go ahead and start the meeting. This is April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, meeting of Jefferson City Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Dale Vaughn. I am the Chair of the Commission. I'd like to remind everyone in the Commission and people in the audience to please silence phones and other electronics. And also turn on your microphones when speaking. I'm going to go ahead and start with having the members introduce themselves, starting with Council Liaison, who is not here. So we'll go straight to our new member, Trica. Go ahead, say your name.
Emily Fretwell.
Jack Deacon.
Penny Quigg.
Bunny Tricky Cotton.
Dean Do Toy.
Greg Butler.
Shannon Hawk.
Corinne Bliss, City Staff.
Eric Barron, Planning Manager.
Sunny Sanders, Director of Planning Protective Services.
Dustin Birch, Associate City Attorney.
Shane Wade, City Staff.
Beth Sweetin, City Staff.
Okay, the city code authorizes nine regular members and three alternates. Alternates are designated to vote upon the absence or disqualification of regular members. A quorum of five members or alternates is necessary to conduct business. I declare that a quorum is present. The following regular members are absent this evening. Blake Marcus, Spencer Hoefeld, and Candace Moore. Are there any members who are disqualified from voting on the agenda item? Nope, seeing none. The voting members are as follows. Emily Fretwell, Jack Deacon, Dean Do Toy, Bunny Tricky Cotton, Penny Quigg, Shannon Hawk, Gregory Butler, and Tricky Young. Is there anyone present in the audience to present case number P two-two zero zero five, one oh one Jackson Street and five oh four State Street rezoning? Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or are there any requests for continuance?
No.
Are there any requests to reorder the agenda?
Nope.
Okay, Courtney, will you please read the format of the hearing in order of testimony?
I'd like to briefly describe the procedures of the Commission. The proceedings of the meeting are being recorded, so please step to the microphone when you speak and give your name and address for the record. The standard order of each case is as follows. After introduction of the request by City Staff, the applicant or their consultants will provide information on their request. The opening presentation by the applicant shall be limited to ten minutes, unless additional time is granted by the Commission. The applicant shall have additional three minutes for closing testimony if requested. We will then ask to hear from opponents of the request. Wait, we will then ask to hear from supporters of the request. We will then ask to hear from opponents of the request. We will then ask to hear from anyone else who wishes to speak on the request. Testimony shall be limited to three minutes each unless additional time is granted by the Commission. City Staff will then make their recommendations on their request. In order to reduce the time necessary to hear an application, printed materials, including staff reports and applicable findings, shall not be written to the record unless directed by the Commission. The Commission will then close testimony from the floor. The Commission will then discuss the proposal, then give their determination with reasons. The form motion shall be positive, that is, if the motion shall be made to accept the request, as were dissented, or with modifications, stipulations, or conditions. A final vote will be taken with ayes in favor, nays opposed. The Chair shall announce the results of the vote specifying the number of votes cast in favor and the number of votes cast against. The following documents are entered as exhibits for all items under consideration at this meeting. The city code of the City of Jefferson as amended, the comprehensive plan and land use map, copies of applications under consideration, a list of property owners to whom most is recent, the affidavit publication of the public notice in the newspaper, copies of drawings, plans, and/or renderings under consideration, letters remembering from staff, staff reports, minutes of proceedings, correspondence or other materials submitted by the public or the applicant, rule of procedure for the Jefferson City Planning and Zoning Commission. These items are of public record and available for inspection to the Department of Planning and Protective Services or the Office of the City Clerk. Please be advised that any items that are presented, distributed, otherwise received pertaining to the cases under consideration become the property of the Commission. This includes any photographs, drawings, petitions, and letters. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Courtney. Do any Commissioners have... Excuse me. Sorry. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda as printed?
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve the regular minutes of February tenth, twenty twenty-two?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Do we need to acknowledge our liaison? Okay. Eric Wiseman, our liaison, just entered the door. Thank you.
I think I'm your co-liaison, technically.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's Mike Lester.
Oh, okay. Oh, she's co-liaison. Thank you. Yes. Communications have been distributed to Commission members. The case number P two... We'll have the public hearing for case number P two-two zero zero five, one oh one Jackson Street and five oh four State Street rezoning from MU mixed use to PUD plan, unit development, and preliminary PUD plan. And we'll ask Courtney to present that case.
Okay, first I'll talk about the correspondence, just for a little bit. It was from Amanda Berkey-Williams, and she just had asked, what's going on with this? I'd gotten correspondence about this. What is this about? And we responded by saying, here's the link to the Planning and Zoning Commission case. This is what it's about. And then she proceeded to say, thank you, we received the information in the mail. Like, she's a property owner, so she got that letter. And she said that she was in support of the request and happy to see it come to the Commission. So there was that bit. And then as far as the case, it's P two-two zero zero five again, and it is located at one oh one Jackson Street and five oh four East State Street. And that's the property, the location and zoning map. And much of the zoning that surrounds it and the immediate surrounding is MU one mixed use. There's a little bit of PUD to the north, and then a little bit of RA two, that high-density residential in the green. And then a little bit further out, there is commercial, various commercial from CO, Commercial Office, to C three, Central Commercial. And so that is the zoning and location of the area. And then here's a couple of photos, one being on the left-hand side, an aerial photo, just to give a little bit of perspective on that. And then in the upper right-hand corner, well, both of those on the right-hand side are street views. And the one on the upper right-hand corner, that one is from the East State Street side, showing both where the parking lot that is proposed would go, as well as the building itself. That is currently existence, is a four-unit residential structure. And then the bottom left, well, the bottom right-hand corner photo is from Jackson Street, that's the front of the building. And so what they're proposing to do is rezone this area. Let me go back. They want to rezone from MU dash one to PUD plan and development. And they also are proposing a preliminary PUD plan, so that they can utilize that existing four-unit apartment and put another unit down there in the northern portion of the basement. And they're also, for that five oh four East State Street, they're going to include that in the preliminary PUD plan and put a parking lot there. And let's see. So this is a, this little visual showing how it would transition from that rezoning from mixed use to PUD, and how it would expand that PUD district that is north of the property currently, and it would expand that zoning southward. And this is a site plan showing what they want to do as part of that preliminary PUD plan, including the proposed parking lot and the building itself, and how they would include a sidewalk connecting that parking lot to the building. And with that, I will pass it back over to... Well, I'll let the applicant describe the rest of it, but I'll pass it back over to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Courtney. Do any Commissioners have any questions for Courtney? Do any Commissioners have any questions for staff? No? Okay, we'll move on. Who would like to present this case? You'll speak your name and address.
My name is John Blosser. I'm the Board President for Transformational Housing. We're a nonprofit that's been in business for about two years. We've completed a house at two oh three Cherry Street. So it's very similar, except quite a bit smaller. It's about thirty-six hundred square feet. This is going to be around six thousand square feet when we're finished. And I guess before I get too far, I want to thank you all for what you're doing. I know it's oftentimes a thankless job, but I will feel the same way regardless of your decision today. I do appreciate the time you're giving to our city to do a very important job. We were founded after the tornado, and the purpose of our organization is to help replace some of the low-income housing that was lost during the tornado. And as you probably know, we had a shortage even before that. And so we currently have eight properties. Our charter requires that twenty-five, or seventy-five percent of those must be rented to low-income people. And we rent those at below-market rate, depending upon the income that they have. Each low-income family has a pair of coaches to meet with them weekly, to provide them financial coaching, if you will, and help them achieve their life goals. About twenty-five percent, up to twenty-five percent, can be market-rate property. And our intent is to maintain that twenty-five percent as close to twenty-five percent as we can without going over. And the reason for that is because people need connections with folks that, you know, have, what do we say, made it? But folks that are independent, they have good credit scores and that sort of thing. Because so much of what we do is dependent upon the connections and the people we know and that sort of thing. So that's the direction that we're moving. We hope, in this property, to be able to put five families in there. At least one of those will be, you know, could be one of you all. It won't be low-income. And probably two, because this property is going to be, the size on it of the individual apartments will be significantly larger than what we have on Cherry Street. So we'll probably have two on this one. But that's really what we're trying to do, is that we want five instead of four, because the property, it is so large. Larry Burkhardt here is our architect and our engineer, and he can answer the technical questions. I can answer the how-com questions. And the other thing, one other thing I want to do before I sit down is I want to thank staff. When we came to staff with this, you know, we're kind of, what are we going to do? And they've been extremely supportive, helping us learn how to negotiate this, so thank you.
Mr. Blosser, could you state your address, please?
My address? Certainly. Nineteen eleven, we just moved, not too long ago. Nineteen eleven Wind River Drive.
Thank you very much.
One oh one.
This is a little strange for me, but also I'd like to introduce Michelle with the Housing Authority. And she has been, the Housing Authority has been supportive. Land is not transferred yet from the Housing Authority to Transformational Housing at this time. So, but with guidance of staff, we're before you asking for, yes, all right, Larry Burkhardt, one nineteen.
We all know who you are, but...
It's right up there in case you look at it.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. There's a little section of MU dash one that says that you can only have four units per building. So with five units, we're before you asking to change these two parcels to a PUD. Some of you are realtors. The existing building, we're not really going to expand its footprint. We're not going to change anything on the properties, except for putting in a parking lot. The footprint of the building is approximately forty-four feet by fifty-foot, three-story. Basement unit, this is still preliminary, is about eight hundred and ninety square feet. First floor would be a unit at about eight hundred square feet. And the other units would be on the second and third floor, about nine hundred and eighty square feet, to get five apartments. So we're looking at, and John, correct me, but three two-bedroom and three two-bedroom and two three-bedroom. So with the type of non... Well, these are more permanent residents. They would be in there about a year and a half. So it's kind of right on the edge of the PUD, with Dooley Towers right across, and then RA two right across. But we're also very cognizant that it's in a neighborhood conservation district, so we're planning to keep the exterior as close as possible to existing. Except in the rear, on the east side, they apparently tore down the stairs, because they do have, I guess it was wooden stairs. I'm guessing they were gone by the time I even started looking at it, five, six years, or seven years ago. But really, the footprint's going to stay the same, and we're going to try to fix it up. The roof, it needs replacement, and then also tuck pointing. And we'll take it down to the stud and clean it out, and put in a sprinkler system, besides other code requirements. But it seems like it's a good use of an existing building to restore it, and then also transform it into multiple units for good affordable housing within the city limits. And usually I do better with questions. So, but right now, we're asking for the MU classification of the zoning to be transferred to a PUD based upon the preliminary PUD plan that has been submitted.
So it'll be three units, is that right?
Be five units total.
So, but you're not building another building on the property?
No, this was a circa nineteen-hundred structure, unreinforced masonry.
Circa nineteen-hundred, as you think.
And it's a, when it was built, it was a very high-end duplex. I mean, for it to be three stories like that, and with that much square footage, I mean, it was for the upper class at the time. So it's a big box, but it's separated vertically, and it's got stairways in the center. And so it's, it kind of lends itself, because they changed it to, from a duplex to a fourplex, from previous owner. And now we have an empty basement on the northern side, and so it's got windows that could be used for emergency egress and so forth. So then that still would make a nice-sized apartment. So we still need some things to figure out, like the slope of the site, we need a topo, and figure out what we have to do. Code requires that we try to make as many type-B apartments, in other words, accessible, ready, that we have to convert by adding some things to it. But, and that's where, this is only preliminary, thank you, Eric. So, any more... Hopefully this is straightforward, slam dunk. So if not...
Michelle, John, do you have anything?
I'm Michelle Wesler from the Housing Authority here in Jefferson City, ten forty Myrtle Avenue. I just want to say that our board and myself are very excited about this, and look forward to seeing something different across the street from Dooley and Hamilton Towers when we go over there, because it's quite a sight to see. And we appreciate your support. Hope we get it, but if not, like he says, we'll still move on.
One question. What kind of condition is the property in? Is it pretty, obviously a new roof, and you're going to gut it, basically, but is it in decent condition, or is it...
Pretty rough.
Is it been abandoned for a while?
The first thing we're going to have to do is fix the roof and tuck point.
Get it watertight?
Yeah, we'll have to fix the roof and tuck point the brick. Once that's done, we're very confident that we can handle anything on the inside. On Cherry Street, we ended up replacing thirty-four floor joists because of termite damage and fire damage. This doesn't have the fire damage, and we're hoping it won't have the termites. So, but we will, we'll do the same thing we did there. We rip it all the way down to just the bare brick, and we'll leave the, you know, the low-durrying wall in the middle. On Cherry Street, we tore out probably half of the subfloor and then ended up replacing it. We hope we don't have to do that here, but we're prepared if we need to.
Thank you.
The one thing about this unit also is, up until the hole formed in the roof after the tornado, that basement was watertight. So it was, we didn't see any water down there until after we got that hole in the roof.
One other thing I was going to tell you about, the fifth unit, if you will, is going to be the basement. One side of the basement, as Larry mentioned, has windows, so we can put a unit down there. It's neat because it has a drive-up right to the back door of it. And so our thought is, we'll make this handicap accessible, have, you know, a two-bedroom handicap accessible unit down there. The other side, since we don't have sufficient windows on it, will be some storage for transformational housing for projects. The other portion will be a laundry, a common laundry room, and, you know, maybe a ping-pong table or something like that, a place for the kids to play when it's raining outside.
One important thing, I said it's an unreinforced masonry structure. It's, exterior walls appear to be still vertical. There's no bowing, we won't get any type of sudden failures, which I'm more worried about. Interior wood's been in there for over a hundred years. And it's all... It's all unreinforced masonry, and my biggest fear is that I get something out of plane, and that would cause for immediate failure. So unfortunately, I have enough experience with that to look for that type of defect. It just seems like it's in still pretty good shape. I'm not guaranteeing what all the floor joists and everything else are, but bean pockets are easy to replace the beans. But rebuilding all that masonry is, right now, though, it still seems like it's in good enough shape to be salvaged.
Anybody else have any questions for the presenters? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this request? Okay. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition of the request? Seeing none. Is there anyone who would just like to speak on this request? Okay. Seeing none, we will now close testimony, and then Courtney can give us the staff report.
Okay. So in analyzing this proposal, there were several things considered, including one of them being, well, there was two analysis done, one for the rezoning, one for the PUD plan itself. And so starting with the rezoning side of it, the cover of the plan, it complies with it, and there is a little visual there, too. Basically, so that's a snippet from the comprehensive plans, future land use map. And as you can see, that property is within the mixed use. It's under that categorization for mixed use. And while it's going to be transferred over to a PUD zoning district, it will still have the underlying mixed use and neighborhood conservation, NC zoning, regular requirements, those sort of things that would... Say, for example, if there's nothing covered in the PUD plan, it would still have to comply with those regulations. In addition to that, it would still foster that sense of mixed use, that sense of city-center neighborhood nodes and corridors that are typical to those two city centers. And let's go back. Okay, and then the second thing is, as far as utilities, it seems to have adequate utilities that could serve it. It is not within the one-hundred-year-old flood zone. It meets district-size requirements, and it is compatible with the land uses that it's...
Seeing none, we will now close testimony and then Courtney can give us the staff report.
So in analyzing this proposal, there was several things considered, including one of them being, well, there was two analysis done. One for the rezoning, one for the PUD plan itself. And so starting with the, the rezoning side of it, the covering the plan, it complies with it. And there is a little visual there too. Basically, so that's a snippet from the Conbringing to Plans Future Use Map. And as you can see, that property is within the mixed use. It's, it's under that categorization for mixed use. And while it's going to be transferred over to a PUD zoning district, it will still have the underlying mixed use and neighborhood conservation NC zoning regular requirements, those sort of things that would. Say, for example, if there's nothing covered in the PUD plan, it would still have to comply with those, those regulations. In addition to that, it would still foster that sense of mixed use, that sense of city center neighborhood nodes and corridors that are typical to those, to city centers. And let's go back, okay. And then the second thing is as far as utilities, it seems to have adequate utilities that can serve it. It is not within the one hundred year old flood zone. It meets district size requirements and it is compatible with the land uses that are surrounding it, much of which are residential. And the, as far as reverse spot zoning, so if it were not rezoned, it wouldn't be as though the owner is at a disadvantage from the other property owners that surround it because they are all, the ones that are right there, the adjacent property owners are under that mixed use one zoning district. So they have to comply with that, that regulation that says that they can't have more than four units within a residential structure. Then as far as the existing zoning expansion, it would expand the, the PUD to the north. And then it would benefit the city. It appears to benefit the city more than the adverse effects that it might impose. And as far as the, so on the other side of it is the PUD plan itself. For the land use, it, see, the, the land use proposal that includes the addition of the residential unit and the parking lot seem to be in compliance. The building design, so within the preliminary PUD plan, they talk about how they will abide by the Jefferson City Building Codes that are, that are currently adopted and that they would demonstrate such compliance in the building process or building permit process. And then the parking, so in that plan, they talk about that they've got a proposed parking lot. And it shows eight spaces on their plan so far. And then for signage and lighting, they don't propose anything so far. But those, if they do have any signage or lighting that they would put in place, in particular like outside lighting, they would have to comply with the underlying zoning district MU one, mixed use and the neighborhood conservation district. And they actually in the PUD plan talk about how they would be conscious of the historic character of the area. And it doesn't seem to increase traffic. And they do not propose any sidewalks except along the street front edge. They only have the one there that would connect from the parking lot to the building. So with that, um, staff recommends approval of both the rezoning from MU one to PUD as well as the preliminary PUD plan. And up there is the form motion for both of those, both of those components of the requests under this case. And if it were to move forward, it would go to the city council on, it would go for a, a public hearing on May second. And then, well, no introduction, sorry, on May second and then a public hearing on May sixteenth. Both of which would be in this, this room at six PM. I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Courtney. Do any commissioners have any questions of staff?
All right.
If I could, I'll, I'll try to add a little bit more color to, to this particular, not so much the request. Courtney's given an overview of it, but some of the background. And so, you know, at its base, it is, you know, as the applicant's consultant mentioned, it's, it's a request to go from four units, which is permitted within that existing MU one district, to five units. Okay? A fairly minor, you know, thing, movement of one unit. But it happens to be at that threshold there where, where the four units is a permitted use of that, that zoning district. And literally within the, the overlay district regulations calls out that anything going greater than four units would need to, need to go through a PUD process. And so that is what, what they are doing. So I wanted to describe why that is. Well, it's a very sensitive area. And so the city, you know, has recommendations, you know, by the central east side neighborhood plan, put in place an overlay district regulating the, the exterior appearance of, of the structures in order to, to retain basically the, the historical look and feel of that area, very important for the community. And, you know, once types of uses start to get up to a greater number of units, it becomes more difficult to, to have a type of structure that would maintain that typical, typical appearance. You're basically getting into an apartment building type of look. And so rather than following, you know, the, the straight regulations within the conservation overlay district, this option for a P, this requirement for PUD review and approval puts in that extra layer of review to make sure that this particular proposal is not going to have an overly negative effect on the area surrounding it. Also, within those regulations was a requirement that any units, residential units within a building, they, they all must have a window facing a street. And, and really the idea there was to provide some, you know, defensible space or some, you know, some connection to the street for the units so that we, so that it's not, you know, rear apartment units that, that would be existing in that area. This particular property happens to be on a corner and the, the unit in the basement that they're proposing for that fifth unit does have a window facing the street. And so, so it is well positioned for that. But I wanted to give a little bit of the background on that, that, you know, it is, it is a sensitive spot in the city. And so there is a reason why this, this fairly burdensome process is, is at play in front of, of the commission. Is to make sure that such things that are occurring there are, are suiting and fit within the area. And so, and then I'll point out one other thing, which I didn't catch in our staff review of the PowerPoint, is we're trying to make it very clear that the motion is a recommendation for approval, not straight approval. So we missed a word on the form of motions. It's a motion for recommendation of approval for the request to rezone. And then again, motion for recommendation of approval for the preliminary PUD plan. And so both of those items, as Courtney mentioned, would be proceeding to the city council. I'll also mention that the PUD plan is a preliminary PUD plan. There's a follow-up final PUD plan, but that is reviewed at the staff level. And so we would review that document just like we would any other development plan in the city as long as it is in conformance with what gets approved through this process. So they're proposing a parking lot. We would eventually get a, a, a drawing showing the details of that parking lot in conformance with all other requirements of the city code such as stormwater. And so Shane Wade doesn't have a whole lot to say at this meeting because it's a very simple parking lot. But he would be, of course, on the review of the, the final PUD plan when that comes in at the staff level. And so I hope that gives a little bit more background and other than that, again, if there's any questions.
So I figured that was in the district overlay, which would, like you said, require to look, have a certain look on the exterior. Is there any requirement on the interior at all, other than obviously you're going to gut it and bring it up to code?
No, outside of the window requirement, that, that every unit have a window facing a street. There's no interior requirements with the overlay district.
Okay, no further questions? Okay. Seeing none, would someone like to make a motion?
I move to recommend the request to rezone lots addressed at one oh one Jackson Street and five oh four East State Street from MU one, mixed use to PUD planned unit development.
Second. Okay. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion passes.
Also move to recommend the preliminary PUD plan with the establishment of an underlying MU one, mixed use and NC neighborhood conservation overlay zoning district.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion passes.
I'd like to say thank you all for all that you're doing to improve and offer these benefits to our community. I sincerely appreciate everything that's been done.
Thank you. Courtney, with this proceeding, this proceeding will go on to the city council and I believe that's the date there. Oh, it's May second, okay.
So it will move on to the city council for introduction on May second. And then it will move on to, for a public hearing on May sixteenth at this room and six, at six PM. Both, both of them will, at that time and location.
We'll go ahead and turn it over to Eric for other business.
Uh, let's see, under other business, staff updates from prior case, nothing to report. Uh, because we didn't have any, any council actions last month. So, so no updates on prior cases. Mr. Chair, we have two members whose last meeting is today. And, and both of them have been around a very long time. Both of them are, are term limited out next month. However, one of them stated he won't, won't be able to attend next month. And the other one got elected to the city council. And so the way that works is the moment upon oath of acceptance into the city council, the membership to the Planning and Zoning Commission automatically drops. The two are not compatible. And, and so Mr. DeToye is term limited out. Mr. Deacon is headed up to the city council. And so neither one will be at their meeting, at the meeting next month. So I, I did some research, as I like to do. And, and so first I'll, I looked up, Mr. Deacon originally was appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission. His first meeting was in April of two thousand and three. That is three years before I accepted a position with the city. And so, so his term predates me. And so it's, it's, it's an odd fluke that Mr. Deacon was appointed first as an alternate, but then appointed to fill out a remaining term. I think there was a, probably a resignation before a term was finished. And then was eligible for three terms beyond that. And so he, he would have been term limited out at, at the next meeting. But in two thousand and three, I looked up the chair was Mr. Mike Berenzin. And, yes, I think. Okay, on the Historic Preservation Commission now. Mr. Berenzin, I believe, got term limited out of the Planning and Zoning Commission at, at a point. But I, I looked up the first meeting that you attended. And the most notable item on the agenda, and so a little history lesson, is, was the Cherry Creek development, if you recall. And so Cherry Creek condos at the time was proposed out on Highway one seventy-nine, Rock Hill Road. Was a tremendous earth-moving activity and is a development that ultimately failed after construction. I believe two buildings. And so was, was kind of in limbo for a while as a condominium development and eventually purchased and, and repurposed as an apartment complex and, and is in active use today. And the southern portion of the property was divided off and developed by the Missouri American Water Company as a, as a operation site. And so, and there's some other commercial lots with that area that, that were developed and, and are successful today. There's a couple of restaurants out there, so. But that was the most notable item that, that took place on that meeting. So Mr. DeToye, so you were appointed in September of two thousand and nine was your first meeting. And the chair was Mr. Ralph Robinett. Actually, he was the vice chair and so there was election at that point. I think that was, I, in fact, I, I believe that may have been the point where Mr. Berenzin had been term limited out. And so Mr. Robinett took up the chair duties basically at that meeting. The most notable item on that agenda was Central Electric Power Cooperative out on Jefferson Street. So right off the outer road of Highway fifty-four. They, they went through a proposal to add two buildings to their site. Basically utility storage buildings and trucks, things like that. And so the reason it's kind of interesting is currently under construction today. They have again invested heavily in that property by tearing down their old office building and, and reconstructing it. And so they're, they're currently kind of scattered around town with their offices. But they're, they're proceeding with that, you know, major investment in that property. And so we've, we've seen it go through a cycle twice within your term here. And, but that is my history lesson for the today. And so, you know, I want to, to recognize all of you, of course, for your service to the community as an important function that you fulfill here and making very important decisions, sometimes extremely controversial decisions. And particularly for two members that, that managed to survive the entire length of their three terms. And, and, and in that, that service.
Can I say something? Especially for the new members. It is incredibly important, you look at the site and listen to the neighbors. You have to see how it fits in the whole picture. So many times you say, yeah, that works, but then you really hear the story from the neighbors and you have to have an open mind. And because this is the most important board, I think almost as important or more important than the city council. Because this decides where the businesses go, how they're going to fit in the, in the community, where things develop. So really think it through, I mean, especially the new ones. You have to think how it fits in the city and not just on paper, but how it really fits in the neighborhood. And that's my last lecture.
I doubt it.
Jack, Jack, I'll miss your frustration with meandering code line or meandering zoning lines and district overlays and parking. Yeah, he always had issues with that. Then Dean, I'll miss your knowledge that you bring, your attorney knowledge that you always bring to the, to the commission. He always had good, good thoughts on that, but. Anyways, thank you guys, I appreciate it. Does anybody else have anything to say?
Just want to say thank you both for your service. We have some big shoes to fill here, learning from you all.
With that being said, I declare this meeting adjourned.